Thank you, and welcome to February School Board meeting. We'll call this meeting to order. We'll begin with a Pledge of Allegiance. So if we all stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Do you want to do it?
I have it.
And we do not have amplification tonight with the weather, so we'll have to speak up. And we are on retten, as you know, but we will not have amplification. Okay. Commissioner Ivankic?
After me.
Thanks.
We offer you peace.
We offer you peace.
We offer you friendship.
We offer you friendship.
We offer you love.
We offer you love.
We hear your needs.
We hear your needs.
We see your beauty.
We see your beauty.
We feel your feelings.
We feel your feelings.
We are all smart in our own way.
We are all smart in our own way.
We honor that in you.
We honor that in you.
Let us work together.
Let us work together. Thank you, Commissioner Ivankic. So first on the agenda is, does anyone have any items they would like to remove from the consent agenda? Or the committee meetings? Commissioner Curry?
Could you please remove minutes of 1:15, 19 for the DEI committee?
Got it. It's 4I.
So 4I.
I'll keep track of it.
Thank you.
Point of clarification, are you asking to pull it as a separate agenda or pull it totally?
I'm asking to pull it per my email to you Sunday at 3:21 PM.
So is that, you want to pull it totally off?
That's what I'm asking. Yeah.
Okay. All right, anything else?
Okay.
All right. So I would make a motion to amend, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda in the following manner. Item 4, excuse me, 4I. Okay. Will you give?
If any other changes.
No one else? No other changes?
Well, so that you want to.
Okay. So will someone give me a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll move to approve the agenda, but removing item 4I from it.
Great. Is there a second? Commissioner Awal, thank you. Any discussion?
Chair Awal. So the superintendent's report number nine, the superintendent is not, his staff is prepared to present on all of those?
Yes, they are.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, Commissioner Fisher. All right. So if no, so we'll vote. All those in favor of adopting the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? The motion carries. All right. Next is the approval. So that was the consent agenda, and next is the approval of the agenda. Does anyone have any items or changes they would like to make to the agenda? No changes? All right. Yep. So now we will know what changes to the agenda. Okay, let's vote. All those in favor of the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Okay, the motion carries the agenda. Next is public comment. Do you have, the clerk has the sign in? Commissioner Fisher?
First up is Jeff Comstock. On deck is Dan Cunningham.
And we'll allow for two minutes for public comment? Two minutes for public comment? If that's possible. Thank you.
I myself, can I have slightly more than that?
Yes. At this time, we'll see.
Well, I'm going to stand so I can project a little better.
Thank you.
Jeff Comstock, word seven. At the January Neighborhood Planning Assembly meeting, I learned that the legislature estimates that there are between 2,600 and 3,000 Vermont high school students who graduate every year that lack employable job skills. As a small example of this deficiency, I recently purchased a bag of donut holes at the grocery store. The young lady working at the checkout counter had to ask her supervisor how many pieces in a dozen. And just in case you're wondering, no, she was not an English language learner or a New American. I've also learned through conversations with various school district staff during the past year that the Burlington School District does not have or does not implement a grade retention policy. I raised this topic of a grade retention policy at this time because I believe it is directly related to the staffing and budget discussions among the school board, superintendent's office, teaching staff, and parents that I have observed during the last two budget cycles. There appears to be a purposeful trend to shift staff resources such as interventionists and other support staff toward the early grade levels. As a non-educator, this seems like a sound, common sense strategy. A sound strategy as long as the outcome is to ensure that grade level designations actually mean something and represent the capability of our students. I have to say, I was astounded to hear during last year's budget and staffing discussions that interventionists were engaged with students as high as the eighth grade and even into the high school. This reality highlights two potential problems, and I contend they are in fact linked. The first is that students are moved on from grade to grade when they are not performing at grade level. This practice needs to stop. I'm aware of the self-esteem argument that holding students back at grade level will damage their self-esteem. I believe this argument is flawed. Young people are not stupid. They eventually recognize what they do not know or cannot do. If the district is really concerned about the self-esteem of its students, our schools would stop advancing low-performing students until they get old enough to sabotage their own success when learning difficulty is transformed into behavioral trouble. And this highlights the second potential problem. Are the interventionists and support staff at the higher grade levels actually spending more time dealing with behavioral challenges than learning? The fact that the district is spending so much time and effort on restorative practices suggests to me the answer might be yes. As a final thought, expectations is not a dirty word. In the budget strategy for 2019, if the budget strategy of 2019 of concentrating teaching staff and support staff in the early grades is to be successful, I believe it needs to be coupled with a disciplined grade retention policy and the expectation of satisfactory performance at each and every grade level. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Dan Cunningham, up on deck, Infinite.
I'm Dan Cunningham, and I just want to update the board on work I've been doing around proficiency-based grading in Vermont. I've been working hard to understand how a good law, Act 77, written to allow alternative pathways to graduation, has led to over half of Vermont's high schools removing grades from report cards. This has thrown parents, students, and teachers into a state of confusion, as demotivated students disenfranchised parents, and put college admissions and scholarships in jeopardy. Operating entirely beyond the scope of elected policymakers and the public, administrators and several nonprofits have redefined what a Vermont diploma means. Tomorrow, I testify in front of the Senate Education Committee on my billiard, but I want to relay a few key points to this board. First, I'm proud of our superintendent, Yau Bang, Principal Noel Green, and the primary administrator on the project, Jocelyn Fletcher Shu, for considering the situation carefully, looking to extend the vocabulary of our reporting system without changing the language. By not being rash, they have protected Burlington High Schools and middle school students from the harm that has befallen many students in Vermont. Second, I want you to understand that proficiency-based grading and the removal of 0 to 100, A through F letter grades is not a mandate. It is not the law, and it is not even a regulation. The Agency of Education and their nonprofit partners have miscommunicated this to many superintendents, principals, and teachers. Third, this afternoon, for the first time, a group in Vermont committed to actual study of this issue. The president of the Vermont NEA, the teachers' union, pointed out in testimony at the State House that the largest change in 50 years to Vermont education has been rammed through districts with no input from teachers, parents, or students. Endless assumptions, no research in Vermont, have been made by the Agency of Education and their nonprofit funders. The Vermont NEA announced they plan to survey all 13,000 teachers in an effort to study the landscape. They have asked the state government to delay timelines. As a final note, you should be aware that no state in the union is doing what Vermont is doing. We have been Petri-dished by out-of-state foundations, namely the Nellie Mae Foundation and the Gates Foundation, running money through the great schools partnership of mine to hijack Act 77. You saw some of this money arrive in the form of partnership for change in recent years. But all other states, all of them, that tried this have repealed their laws as this complex, unworkable idea has disintegrated. We are left alone in this experiment. I'm leaving a copy of my testimony, as well as that of Don Tinni, the president of Vermont NEA. It's important to understand how this has happened, and it's important to thank our local school leaders for their care.
Thank you very much, Dan. Yeah, thank you very much. Yeah. Thank you. Hi, welcome, Infinite.
Hi.
You can sit. You can sit. Thank you.
I'm visiting you this evening as the chief organizer, director, and senior change. We've been working closely with the Burlington School District and Winuski School District for the past six years, closely related to partnership for change. We are the grassroots element of that. And so while this work was taking place, the memorandum of understanding between Nellie Mae Education and the Burlington Schools named us as a main community partner and was invited into a meeting where a lot of decision-making would be happening. And, you know, that didn't always happen, right? So even though that MOU has sunsetted, the work of our work is still continuing. And in fact, today, we have more capacity to support the untapped wisdom of folks in the community to improve opportunities and outcomes for students in the district, right? So while I've been following this board a little bit, I've heard some of, you know, some folks on the board and other leadership in the district suggest that a good school climate comes from the top down. Well, in our work, the folks who we consider to have the most standing are the students and the parents who are obliged to send them here, right? We see them as having the most standing when it comes to improving school climate. With this difference in philosophy, right, we've hit some barriers along the way. Since our role is to both partner with the school and challenge the school to be a good steward of the public's resources, we've been often, you know, tension holders and considered to be adversarial, if you will. With all due respect to the board and administrators in the district, almost everyone is familiar with the district's lackluster performance at parent involvement in the district, okay? As well as measuring, improving, and sustaining healthy learning environments in the district. So if y'all can agree that educational opportunities for low-income students, students of color, and students with disabilities increase when families are actively involved as leaders in, you know, system-wide reform, then we, all we're asking is that our work be respected and not hindered by any bureaucratic barriers, you know, access to data, or any individual arbitrary decisions to limit our access to, you know, build leadership among families in the district. We hope that the district continues to be an open, you know, authentic partner with us in the service of a public education system that works for all children, right? Let us work together. Thank you for your talk.
Thank you, Infinite.
Would anybody else like to speak at public comment?
Then we will close public comment, and we will move on to board reflection. Do any board members wish to reflect? Commissioner Fisher, and then Commissioner Curry.
Thank you, Chair Awal. Jeff, I'd love to have you come to the Community Engagement Committee meetings. We have an open forum, and we can, because you raised a number of good questions, and there were some things in there that I want to have a discussion about, but clearly, this is not the place. So we'd, I'd love to invite you. Our next one is next Monday, but we're always posting. Come and have that discussion with us.
Okay. Yes, thank you.
Six o'clock at the King Street Youth Center. Six o'clock at King Street.
Yeah, I'll check what I'm saying.
Okay. Commissioner Curry?
Thanks. I just wanted to note that the minutes of November 13th were pulled last month, and they were not returned to this month, so I'd just like that to be tracked and returned to the agenda, please, next month.
Thank you, Commissioner Curry. So minutes November 13th were not posted back on the agenda.
The full board meeting?
Last month, I pulled them off the agenda.
But it's the minutes of the school board, not a committee?
Yes, the board meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Curry. Commissioner Gulick, and then Commissioner Curry.
Mine is, I already mentioned it to Jeff, but I'm just hoping, given the road situation, that we can either truncate or expediate the meeting tonight. I'm concerned about district employees who have to be in this building so that we can be meeting.
Understood. Anyone else?
Stephen.
Stephen, Commissioner Carey?
Yeah, I just want to recognize and thank the BHS Seahorse Pride Parent Volunteer Group for providing a successful weekend jamboree here at BHS in the basketball court for Hunt and Edmunds middle schoolers, who participated in a clinic run by some of the BHS basketball team. And they had a blast, and to quote directly from one of the participants, and they had pizza, they were given free BHS Seahorse t-shirts, and it was a fabulous day for everyone involved.
Thank you, Commissioner Carey.
The other thing I'd like to say is that Kathy and I had the opportunity to visit a couple of schools these past two weeks, and for me, and for Kathy, I'm sure, I'm not speaking for her, but for me, it's fabulous to see expert teachers working and doing incredible jobs with our students. And I can briefly describe the science fair that we saw taking place in two classrooms at Flynn on Friday. There were 50 kids involved in two classrooms, 50 kids. Oh, excuse me, it was Hunt. So it was Hunt. There were 50 kids, sixth graders, right? They all had researched unusual creatures of the sea. They created trifles with very beautifully illustrated information about these creatures. They created an art project associated with that, and they presented that to themselves and then to us as guests. And then, after lunch, 50 second graders entered the room. So now there were 100 students in two rooms, totally focused, quiet, respectful, participatory. It was just unbelievable to watch it. And it just made me so proud to think that this is going on in just one, two classrooms in our school. So I just wanted to shout that out tonight.
Thank you. Thank you for your work on the Personnel and Curriculum Committee and for making those school visits. They matter, on behalf of the board. Thank you. Commissioner Wick?
Yeah, I'll be very brief. I want to thank both Infinite and Dan as well, as Jeff, of course, but you two hadn't been mentioned, all three of you, this actually goes to, for coming out on a night like this. Obviously shows you care deeply, and each of you clearly put a lot of work in your respective areas. And I really think personally that we can only improve as a school district if we not only have the board and the employees of the school district, but people like you who care as much as you do, doing the hard work you're doing, and just bringing it to our attention, but not only that, just doing what you're doing and interfacing every day to make it a better place. Thank you so much. Really appreciate it.
Thank you. Yes, exactly. And also, to lead up to that, in closing, Dan Cunningham, thank you for reaching out. And, you know, when the time is right, we looked at your testimony that you'll do tomorrow. I know you've spoken to myself and kept the communication open. We really appreciate you working together with the board so that we are in the know of your efforts, and as well as we can inform Superintendent O'Bang. And I appreciate your reflection on the district and Jocelyn, what started as a group of BHS parents concerned, you know, through reaching out to the board and myself and me putting you in touch with Jocelyn and starting that communication on your own, and again, knowing the bandwidth of everybody, we really appreciate the effectiveness of your leadership for that group of parents, that, again, you can own that, and it doesn't fall on the shoulders of potentially the principal here at the time, but that, you know, I really appreciate that. And Infinite, as well as a community organizer, like we talked about, we are here to listen to your concerns and work with you and your group as well, and we recognize the value. We know, six years ago, we, our homeschool liaisons, those parent positions that went away, we recognized that void, and I'm open to suggestions that I know, you know, I speak for myself, but I imagine the whole board supports in that connection with parents. And we see it's the number-one way to, you know, improve student outcomes is through, you know, family outreach as well. But thank you for coming here tonight as well, and appreciate your work throughout the city and Winuski. Moving on to the approval of the consent agenda.
We already did that.
Yep, thank you. Next is, we will go straight to the student commissioners' report for time.
Student commissioners' report tonight. I'd like to invite up the Social Justice Union.
Hi, welcome, BHS students. Yep, now's your time.
Should they go to the public comment area?
Yeah. So is Navia, will you want to use that microphone? You guys can all speak, we can move it closer to the table or retten. Is it good right there?
It's good there.
It's got a long range. Okay, great. So welcome. If everyone wants to, do you want to introduce yourselves and your grade?
My name's Navia Wilcox, I'm a junior at BHS.
My name's Martine Melwila, and I'm a junior here.
I'm Silas Brown, I'm a junior here.
Jonas Dodson, junior.
I'm Mo Hadi, junior.
I'm Lily Mitchell, and I'm a junior.
Welcome, everyone.
First off, I'd like to thank you guys for your time today. In the 2017, 2018 school year, Burlington High School, with unanimous consent from the Burlington School Board, agreed to fly the Black Lives Matter flag for the duration of that school year. With overwhelming support, the flag-raising celebration was held on February 19, 2018. It was agreed that flying the flag during every Black History Month would be a topic of discussion for the following year. The impact the flag had on our community determined whether or not the flag could continue to be raised. The conclusions are as follows. Black Lives Matter is a large and often misinterpreted movement. In some regions, it can be associated with violence and harm. But the movement was actually created to challenge institutionalized and systemic racism against people of color. Raising the Black Lives Matter flag is an opportunity to encourage overdue conversations about racism in our school, district, and community. We are the most diverse school in Vermont, and we are happy to report an overwhelming amount of support from our peers, teachers, and fellow community members. In short, raise the Black Lives Matter flag plus success. Burlington School District and Burlington School District students, and students of color, believe that in honor of Black History Month, we should raise the Black Lives Matter flag to validate and amplify the voices of all of our students. As a district, we often take pride in our racial equity and diversity. We believe by approving this motion to fly this flag, it will show our students that the district stands behind their message. While we realize this will not solve the issue of racial inequality in our district, we are certain that this will step in the right direction.
By raising the flag, the district continues creating momentum to further our efforts in combating racism. We propose that for this year, the flag be flown through the end of March, and starting next school year, have it raised annually every February, moving forward during Black History Month. In the year 2016, the city of Burlington adopted the My Brothers Keeper Initiative, which is a national program that seeks to address the opportunity and achievement gaps facing young men of color. Since then, we've doubled our MBK mentors, which will hopefully lead to an increase in opportunity and self-development for young men of color in the school district. Similar to programs like My Brothers Keeper, the purpose of the Black Lives Matter flag is to encourage overdue conversations about racism in our school, district, community, and country by raising a symbol that prompts these conversations.
This is a chance for the district to show that they recognize the barriers students of color face institutionally and systematically in our school and greater community. We believe that by flying this flag, we will show students of color that they are seen, heard, and embraced. Thank you for your time and your continued support of the student voice.
Thank you very much for your words. Thank you, BHS students and members of the Social Justice Union. So may I have a motion to, we propose that the BHS students at Burlington High School propose that for this year, the flag to be flown through the end of March 2019, and starting next school year, 2020, and annually every February moving forward through the Black History Month.
I'll still move.
Commissioner Wick, second. Commissioner Ivankic? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, sorry. Any discussion, sorry. Commissioner Fisher?
So I'm going to put aside my personal beliefs about Black Lives Matter, and I'm going to ask some difficult questions of the board and of the students. On what basis does the board and the students choose to fly a flag that promotes a cause? So this, I know someone brought this up last year, and I haven't heard a good framework for making this decision. So I'll put it to you this way. What if a student says, "We should fly the Make America Great Again" flag? How does the board make that decision? The students, you said that there was overwhelming support for the BLM flag from peers, teachers, and fellow community members. How do you quantify that? What about, did you do a survey? I'm concerned that we are making a decision ongoing every year on the basis of our own personal beliefs without a framework to make that decision going forward.
Thank you, Commissioner Fisher. Commissioner Awal?
Last year, the students actually brought a questionnaire that they did of all BHS students to us when we were making this decision. So, yeah, there was, there was a lot of discussion among the students.
Commissioner Gulick?
And can't the framework be that we simply take these requests on a case-by-case basis, and we make, and we deliberate and make decisions, you know, as each one comes up? I mean, there doesn't have to be a framework, I don't think, that is standard for all issues that might come up in the school when it comes to flying a flag. Right?
Commissioner Curry?
Yeah, I mean, I think, just to tack on to what Kathy said, there was a lot of research. There was a lot of information brought forward.
First, to the committee that you were chairing, or who was chairing? I forget. Maybe it was DEI. Yeah, you and, you guys were on that committee. So first, there was a lot of research brought forward to the committee. So there's minutes from that, and then there was, including the survey, and then the board had a full discussion. And so, you know, maybe it's that if you wanted the students to bring all that back, or just maybe to say, "Please refer to these meeting minutes." It was very robust, I think, because they had talked about it with the administration. Is that right? Did you guys? I mean, maybe they could just answer the question about the work they did leading up to it. There was a lot of work. They asked about how to do it, how to navigate it. And then all that was brought forward to committee and then the board. So, you know, I agree with Martine. I don't, I don't think we have to codify every, everything that, you know, every request to the board. It was clear that a lot of work had been done, a lot of groundwork had been done, and I think if we were to have a request like Make America Great flag, you know, the expectation would be that the students do the same amount of research to demonstrate why, you know, something like that would be justified, and then that discussion, I think, would take place the way this one did in the community.
Commissioner Awal?
I just wanted to add that we also had... I just wanted to add that we also had our legal counsel come, and he looked through it with us on legality of doing this, so.
Yes. Commissioner Wick.
Yeah, sure. I will say that I fully support this resolution for reasons I don't need to get into, but I do support it. But to some degree, I think Commissioner Fisher has asked a good question in the abstract. I am going to personally admit that this is a political decision, and I support it. But if, I would have a harder time supporting some other flags. And so, I'm just going to admit that this is a, I think this is a political decision of the board in some way. We did obtain a legal opinion last year from counsel, and I'd have to dig that up, that said we have a right to do it. So, assuming we have the legal right to do it, I'm still going to admit that I think this is a political decision, and I'm going to vote in favor of it because I, I do believe in the cause under the circumstances.
Commissioner Fisher?
Oh, sorry, you want to?
Commissioner Pillsbury?
Well, I'm making this based on a moral decision. I am tired of people who are, who have persons of color being picked out for particular things. We hear all those stories throughout our country, and even in our own town. And I think what we're basically saying is, we have students in our school system who are of color. We want to make sure that they feel that they're respected and just as valued as the majority population. So, to me, this is not a political decision. This is like, we're saying to everybody in our district who is a person of color, that you matter, and that we want to make sure that everyone recognizes that the, the, the city of Burlington and the staff at the Burlington School System recognizes that. It's our little step that we can do to make sure that people of color feel respected, at least in this small, little community. And that's, this is not a political decision.
May I have an opportunity, just, so Commissioner Pillsbury, I don't want anyone to misinterpret me, because exactly how you described it is how I feel. So, perhaps the word "political decision" is not well-defined or not well-taken. I don't mean politics as in Republicans or Democrats. I mean, it's a policy decision. So, that's probably what I, because I agree with exactly what you said.
Commissioner Gulick, and then Commissioner Fisher.
I also see this as a moral and ethical issue rather than a political. I understand what you're saying in terms of policy. I think this one also is, is special for a number of reasons. One being that we are a district that is committed to equity. It's part of our mission, it's part of our vision. We have T-shirts that say "All Are Welcome", again, part of our mission, part of our vision, narrowing the achievement gap, opportunities for all. These are all things that we have stated, we've articulated clearly. And this is ostensibly a cause that we are promoting as part of our mission. So, I see the two go together in concert. And so, it makes our decision, I think, a little bit easier in this case than maybe some other, some other ones.
Commissioner Fisher?
So, my, thank you all for your thoughts. And Commissioner Curry, your reference to the work that was done prior to last year's, I remember the good discussion. What, what I was asking about was the conclusion of the impact of flying the flag last year. And so, to the students, my ask was, how do you quantify that there was full support? Was there any work done other than informally? And I did do some research thinking about this, and found that there was a school, I forget which school in the area, had the discussion about it. And what they did is, the board put it back on the students as a piece of work, as homework, come up with a way, was that?
Essex.
Essex? Come up with a way to make these kinds of decisions. And so, I would propose that that's something that we can put back on you guys. How do we make these decisions? If someone, instead of, I get what you're saying, Commissioner Gulick, about we can take this on an ad hoc basis, we can. But I'm, as you all know, I'm in favor of process and system, right? And we should set up a system to make these kinds of decisions. Because as much as I agree with Commissioner Pillsbury on his thoughts, I think that the board is something different than my own personal, and I do think it's political or cultural, whatever we're calling it. I think that's different than the district flying that flag.
Last one, Commissioner Wick.
I don't want to belabor it too much, but I do want to suggest that we, as a board, and so I, I guess I want to say, when I meant political, I just want to be clear, I meant policy choice on our part, on our part. Political policy may have the same root. But we make a lot of policy decisions here, including, and I'm not debating or disagreeing with Commissioner Fisher, I'm just saying, I feel like I'm acknowledging that this board makes a lot of policy decisions, including, we approve and write or disapprove of certain policies that we send up to the Vermont School Boards Association's annual meeting. And that reflects our political or policy will and wishes. And whim is too strong a word, but it reflects who we are as a board. And so, I want to suggest that I think we, if we have the legal right to do it, and it is in keeping with our belief system, i.e. policy, a policy that we can express, some people may disagree. But at least, I think, assuming we have the legal right, then, then I will be voting yes.
Okay. Commissioner Ivanka.
I welcome this lively discussion about this topic, and I definitely support the cause of the Black Lives Matter. I think we're, we're voting on flying this flag for the month of February and March, is that correct?
We're flying this year through February through the end of March.
And?
And then following, and then in future years.
Just based on our beliefs, or some of the beliefs that my co-commissioners expressed, I would challenge us to go one step further of flying the flag all school year, just like the Montpelier High School does.
Commissioner Carey.
Just echo what one of the students said earlier, that this is not a solution to all the issues that we deal with culturally, in our little town, in our state, in our nation. But it's a small step we can take and we should take, and it's a step in the right direction. And you've heard me say that before, and that's what I believe in, taking small steps toward the final result.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Let's vote.
Okay. So, we will vote on a motion. The proposal is that we fly the Black Lives Matter flag here at Burlington High School through February and the end of March 2019, and starting next school year, annually every February, moving forward during Black History Month. Do I have a motion?
All in favor.
Second, who's second?
We already did that, didn't we?
Kathy Awal? That was discussion. So, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, the motion passes. Thank you, Social Justice Union. Next on the agenda is the superintendent's monitoring report, uh, committee reports, excuse me. First committee, item A, policy governance. Commissioner Wick?
Oh, are we not doing the superintendent's?
No, committee reports were next.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, I got temporarily sidetracked.
Thanks.
Policy Governance Committee, I will waive any report here. We're going to have our, this part of the evening a little later.
Great. Next, Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee Report.
We had a visit from the lead SRO, Brian DeFranco, who explained the role of SRO officers in our district. There are two SRO officers, and they actually, I think they have 15, 12 or 15 buildings that they.
There's more than two. But anyway, sorry, go ahead.
That they oversee. And then, he also talked more in detail about their role and how they plug in with the students. We also got a slide presentation about arrests. And so far, they're trying to separate out arrests. We don't have it quite down to where arrests that are associated with school are separated from other arrests in that area. But we're working on that. And a woman named Nancy, who's working with Officer DeFranco, also came, and she's, she's the data person at the station. So, and we, again, had a visit from Parents and Youth for Change with questions about, I think, graduation rates not showing up in the equity and inclusion report.
There were, yeah, so, there were questions about the graduation rates. They are in the equity report card. But I think, I think a broader, interesting conversation that ensued around that was the difficulty in people understanding the data report, because it's just all data. And so, it hasn't really been contextualized with a kind of introduction that would help people interpret the data. So, that would be ideal. That's kind of, you know, expressed as an aspirational goal, because if you're not a data geek, it's hard to just look at a bunch of numbers and understand, like, you're really looking at the inverse of something. So, that was just an illustration of the way, I think, Parents and Youth for Change is bringing issues to the attention of commissioners, that our stuff, or to the district, our stuff is like very academic, you know, and, and may not be digestible for the public. So, I think it's just good to keep in mind, and maybe something for our communications staff to think about, I don't know. And, and then, the, the police report, the issue there is that the, I mean, Monica's new and wouldn't have this context, but the district has been trying to work with the police department for five years to get them to track, so that the arrests distinguish between, they, they've been tracking one-mile radius of the school. And so, you don't know the difference between students being arrested and general public members. And so, this was the first time that, they now have a data person, like, we have a data person. So, ideally, we'd like to connect them so that we actually know the number of students who are being cited. And arrested doesn't mean, like, handcuffed and taken away, it just means cited for whatever reason, to appear in court or be referred to Community Justice Center. So, we are, so it was a good step to see the police department finally, like, have the capacity to do the data tracking that we needed for five years to make that look right. So, we'll get there.
Thank you. Thank you both. Next is Finance and Facilities. Commissioner Pillsbury?
I'm not going to insult your intelligence. The minutes are pretty complete. Basically, what we've been doing has been, I'm meeting with the Director of Facilities regarding their 10-year plan and discussing the projects for next summer, and the future projects. And, and the biggest discussion has been the swing space. This sort of ties in, swing space where students from Edmunds Middle School will go, where work is being done on the heating and ventilation projects that we need to do in the future there. And also, where students from IAA will go, where the work is being done on their insulation of that building, to put it in, in short detail. We have, we have made a decision that we would like to use only temporarily E-Building here as a space for swing space. But we are still not, there are problems with that. We wanted to see if, if the city will give us a permit to perhaps use E-Building for approximately about five years, which would be what it would take to move students in and out of that place in order to fix Edmunds Middle School and IAA. We are still in, in the conversation with the city about whether we would get a permit for that. But I want to let you know that will have an impact upon our high school project, which are very, I think our first priority is to make sure that our high school project is, is done completely as we promised our taxpayers. So, we're still in, that's still in a flux situation. We have canceled our, our weekly meeting tomorrow with the architectural, architects and the BHS Project Oversight Committee, one, because of weather, but two, because we need to get some information from the permitting part of the city of Burlington so we can decide. But we basically are saying, we, we're not going to be, we're, we're thinking about using it as a temporary space only, not for any other, not for any other space for preschool or for superintendent's office, but it will be torn down, event, it will be torn down. It's a matter of about when it can be done without having a negative impact upon the project of the high school. That has been a major discussion that we've been going through. And the, also, we've been talking about starting our summer projects here at the Edmunds Phase Two, which is the driveway, and getting ADA access to Building C. We, and also, the paving and parking lot work that would be done at Hunt. And we have pre-qualified construction companies for both of those projects, and we need to get board approval. It's on your agenda for those. And so, I will move to have the board approve both of the project pre-qualified companies for construction of those projects at this time.
Thank you. So, second, you're making a motion. Yep. You're making a motion?
Yes, I made a motion.
Yep.
I move.
For the pre-qualification. Yep, that was included in the agenda.
Point of order, just, just for the minutes, could you please state your motion clearly so that Bonnie can write it down?
Okay. Guess I have some problems.
I have motion to approve pre-qualified.
Does microphone work?
Whoa!
And I think, Commissioner Pillsbury, what you're looking for is to, to adopt the staff recommendation on pre-qualification of bidders.
Right.
What he said.
You make a motion?
Do you want to say it louder?
I know.
I believe the intent of Commissioner Pillsbury was to move to adopt the staff recommendation for the pre-qualification of bidders for, I forget what they were. One is the.
One is for the Edmunds Two, Phase Two project, and one is for the, the Hunt 2019 project.
Paying.
Paying. Yes, I, yes.
Thank you. Director Labrie, do I have a second?
The, I think the, the committee accepted the staff. Now, the committee is recommending it to the full board. That's, that's how I understood it was going to be done.
Great. Do I have a second? Commissioner Gulick?
Yes.
All those in, any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Thank you, Commissioner Pillsbury, for bringing that.
Do my best next time.
Thank you. Next would be item D, Community Engagement Committee Report.
So, the, I got three things to talk about. The first is the Community Engagement Framework, long-promised, overdue to deliver. So, I sent that out a couple weeks ago. Everyone is encouraged to leverage that for all efforts, threads, initiatives that the board does. I'm going to say it every meeting, the Community Engagement Committee is not the sole means for the board to engage the community. So, everyone's responsible, whether you're working on, whatever you're working on is, is to engage them appropriately, leverage that, whether it's you want to inform, communicate, or collaborate. And please, it's just version one, so if you have any suggestions, let me know. Second thing is that we, we enacted an open forum starting two committee meetings ago. This last instance in January, we spent a full hour on some really good discussions. Commissioner Carey was there, and a number of board, committee, community members came with different things on their minds. So, I want to encourage us, like I did with Jeff, if you want to have a discussion with board members, multiple board members, this is a great opportunity to do it once a month. And we're taking the show on the road. We're going to King Street Center on Monday. This is part of trying to engage all parts of our community, not just the ones that show up on a snowy night at BHS. And so, we're going to try and pick different places to go and to get that open forum, simply to say, what's the phrase that we used?
Six o'clock.
You said it. How, how has the district been serving you and your How, how has the district been serving you and your families?
Yes, I did say that.
Very good.
Thank you. Lastly?
La-
Lastly, we want to talk about board communication. And we brought it up to the group, but we didn't get very far. So I think at this point, if you could all kind of spend some time mulling over how you envision some guidelines for our board communication. One that was fairly pointed was email responses, how we want to handle those, if there's any Mike-like systems, and we're hoping that we can come up with a system on how to respond to public emails that are directed at the entire board.
And I know that Superintendent Obang is looking for some guidelines on how we communicate with him and with his staff. So we're going to be talking about that next Monday in committee, and then we're going to bring it back to the full board to vote on. So if you want to, I don't think we're going to have a lot of time to discuss that at the full board, so if you want to discuss it, we encourage you to come on Monday.
Great. Good opportunity. Thank you. Next Personnel and Curriculum Committee.
We have, you know, we met last January 7th, and it was a discussion, a lot of people attended, about the role of the coaches in the district, and I'll just very briefly summarize it. It's on, it's in your docs, you can look through the whole discussion if you have any questions about it. But basically, what do the coaches do in the district? They act as mentors for new teachers, they keep logs of their work, that's reviewed by Stephanie every now and then. They try to support all teachers in their buildings each year. They respond to teachers' requests by helping resource, plan resources and instruction interventions. They work together weekly to define and refine the coaches' roles and actions in the district. And they plan to attend a three-day training this summer. What they don't do is they don't meet with students in small groups or individually. They don't adapt curriculum to accommodate individual students, and they don't really make lessons or intervention plans directly. What they do is provide the resources for the teachers to do so. The teachers at the meeting pretty much followed the idea that, you know, they're aware that there are protocols for meeting with the coaches. The problem that they articulated was that they don't really have time within their schedules to do that effectively, and they expressed a need for more direct service to students, teachers, parents, and special educators specifically. The funding for the coaching is, I'm not exactly clear on it, I have a figure of 740,600 for fiscal year 1819. I know that it varies from year to year based on, on funding that comes from outside sources, and I'm going to quote Stephanie from, Stephanie from that meeting. She said that we don't know until May how much money we are getting from federal funds, so there can be changeability in the amount from year to year. So there seems to be a need to revisit that yearly, and then certainly by the end of this year, the plan, plans will be in effect to monitor and to evaluate the cost and effectiveness of the Burlington coaching system. So that was from the last meeting. Now, extemporaneously, we just met again last night, and our topic of discussion was the, want to talk about it? It was, it was, we're trying to figure out, just, we're trying to nail down, who are the district, what is the district leadership team? So we have all that information, and we're going to refine the format and get it to you as quickly as possible. We have A through K members of the district leadership team. And then that's a difference between the leadership team and the systems leaders that we've heard talked about. So for me, I was, I wasn't really sure, especially around the budgeting process, because all these teams had input, I wasn't sure who they were. So that's what we were trying to do, figure out what those teams were last night. So we have systems leaders, and we have district leadership teams, and we have those names and positions listed for your edification when this, when you get this document. And then we were, we were wondering what specifically the positions were, the leadership positions were that needed to be filled for this coming school year, 1920. So we have, we have the high school principal as one, we have the high school assistant principal, but there's a, there's a bit of a flux because of the, because of the contract and the agreement between the principal and the assistant principal. So it's not, the assistant principal isn't posted at this point, but the principal is. And then the elementary school principals that we know of are the Champlain Principal and the Flynn Principal for next year. We were inquiring about the hiring policy for the leadership positions, and we know that the board passed new hiring, a new hiring policy, I think it's 2.2. So that's available for you to look at, but that's a policy, that's not the process. So there's a process by which principals are hired, and that was delivered to you in an email on December 3rd. I, I lost it in the emails. So I'll put this, I'll attach this to the minutes as well. On December 3rd, we all got a memo from Yow that specified the process for hiring principals, and we were curious about where we are in the process for the specific principals that are open. So in the VHS principal, the VHS principal position was reposted last week at Nikki's recommendation. So that's still open, it's been reposted. The assistant principal is nowhere because of these agreements between who's going to be what, based on who's going to be the principal, I think.
Well, they're both interim.
They're both interim? Okay. And the Champlain Principal was posted the week of February 5th. And there's an anticipated, there are anticipated positions listed on the BSD website as well. The Flynn Principal, there are interviews being held this week. So that's as far as we've got. There was a lot of information, we're trying to, we're trying to make it clear, who are the teams and where are we, who's being hired and where are we in the hiring process at this point? So we have an idea of what's going on.
And we also looked at who evaluates who in that whole system. And, you know, you'll see it in the minutes, it's all who is in charge of evaluating which, which people, and it's mostly that Yow oversees all of that, of all of the, what was it, district leadership team, except for the head of guidance is, is done by the principal here, even though he's part, or he or she is part of the team, so.
Yeah, I forgot about that. So we have, we were trying to figure out who, who's responsible for evaluating all of these positions. That was the second part of our discussion last night. So we have that information as well. Is there a question, Jeff, that we perhaps could answer? Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners Owell and Carey. I have a question for you. Did you get a sense regarding the principal hiring processes at the elementary and high school? Are, is there sort of the stakeholder engagement process involving teachers, involving parents, involving the various groups that I've seen for many years in the past but haven't seen as much lately?
Well, there was a discussion about that as to why we didn't have parents and community members as part of it. And I'm not sure that in, to tell you the truth, I'm not sure we got an answer as to whether they are part of this process. I know teachers are, but I'm not sure the community members are.
So I can speak to that. If in fact, we had the candidates here tonight, District Principal Bonnie Johnson-Aiden had scheduled time today for meeting with faculty, those candidates meeting with faculty, and also Q and A students, and then there was a community forum that was scheduled that has been postponed. That is for VHS, I know specifically. And it was on the website, it wasn't, so I'm not unclear, but thank you. Are there any other commissioners that would like to speak to that? Commissioner Fisher, and then else?
So we're going to get a presentation from district staff on the principal searches tonight?
You're going to get an update.
An update.
With where we are with each of those.
Okay, thank you.
Do we know why it was postponed, the community forum?
Maybe we'll wait, we'll speak to that, or do you want to, District?
Sure, I can answer it now. So you'll notice that the, the search has been extended to allow for more applicants, so that's why the community forum that had originally been scheduled for tonight was put on hold.
Commissioner Carey and Commissioner Owell, thank you for your report. We greatly appreciate the time you've put into this. We, I, you know, as a board, we appreciate learning the process that is in effect, and yes, you are correct, it's policy 2.2. And we appreciate, and we'll look forward to tonight from District Director Phillips on the update of the principal search. Thank you for your work. It's well done. Thanks. And with that, we will conclude our committee reports and move on to the Superintendent Monitoring Report. In Superintendent Obang's absence, he has Director Labrie and Director Phillips here to speak to, next on the agenda was the Monitoring Report, so Item 2.5, Asset Protection.
Okay, Item 2.5. I don't think we received any questions, but I'm happy to take any if there were any others that are out there. The one thing that I wanted to point out about the report, actually two things. One, from the original draft you saw, I have made live the links to the FY '18 audit that's now posted online. And second of all, I added one small item, well, not small, but one change to the schedule of coverages in the back, and you may or may not have looked this over, but I just wanted to point it out because this is really a more of a forward-looking comment on builder's risk insurance, which is this line here, it says builder's risk insurance, Edmunds, four and a half million dollars. So in simple terms, builder's risk insurance is kind of like having property insurance for stuff that you haven't actually built yet. So it's like for the construction being in progress, and you insure that part of the process before, once it's come, once it's completed, then it comes under your, your other, your property insurance. So the reason I wanted to point this out was obviously, we're going to be doing a lot of work when it comes to where we are now, the high school, and we will have builder's risk insurance that covers that as well. One thing that, one strategy that we're looking at in terms of providing that coverage to minimize the cost is to phase it in. So for example, we're never going to be doing $70 million of construction all at once, right? We know there's going to be maybe a little bit next year, then we're going to have the big portion of it, and then there's going to be at least one year of kind of the tail end of the project. So we will phase in that type of coverage so that that minimizes the cost, the lower the amount that you have to insure, the lower the premium you pay for it. And so that's something you'll see in future reports, but I just wanted to kind of give you a preview of, of not only the fact that that coverage exists, but also the kind of strategy we're using to try to control the costs associated with that particular portion of the project.
Thank you, Director Labrie. All right, so do I have a motion to approve the superintendent is in compliance with monitoring report 2.5?
Actually, I have some questions.
Oh. Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you, Chair Owell. So Director Labrie, I was interested in the, thank you for updating this, I know this is a sec, this is the one that came back a second time, right?
Uh, no, I, well, I don't remember, actually. I don't think so.
What was interesting to me was reading about the facilities repair team, and that they, they're struggling because of high amount of workman's comp and leave available.
Yep.
Can you explain what you mean by, does that department have more leave than other departments?
They do have more leave than some other departments, and in particular, this is an issue that we're seeking to address during the collective bargaining negotiations because they have a substantial amount of available leave, and it's also their use of that leave, including sick leave, is higher than is typical. So obviously, we, we expect and encourage all staff to use their vacation leave. The point of that type of leave is to allow people to kind of recharge their batteries, you know, it's, it's healthy, and also in some settings gives us the opportunity to have other people do or review the work while those people are on leave. So sometimes that provides a good oversight opportunity. However, sick leave is really a benefit designed to be used when it's needed, and what we've seen is a trend in the use of the leave there that is higher than what we've experienced in, in other areas. So it's, it's causing a problem because of the number of absences and the challenges in that contract around filling those absences. So it's something we're hoping to make some progress in addressing through the collective bargaining process, as well as potentially kind of through, through administrative approaches to keeping the, the use of leave limited to when it's justified.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Curry?
Thanks for covering this report, Nathan. Could you let us know how many custodian positions are unfilled right now, please?
Uh, yeah, we can, we can find that. I know recently, we hired and filled, I think, two, two or three of a four, four positions that we had opened, although at least two of those hires were internal, like people applying to move to, you know, from like evenings at VHS to morning, or daytime or something like that. So I think just because of, again, the way that contract's set up and how we have to post those jobs, I think we're going to have to go back and repost those. So I don't know for sure today how many are actually posted, because some of that could be in transition. I think we're probably in the area of maybe four vacancies in property services overall, but I can look into that with more precision.
So, yeah, I'm not, I have a concern about that area limitation, number three, I'm not satisfied that we are in compliance with that. So I just want to let people know that I personally would not accept this report as being in compliance until we have the information about the number of vacant custodian positions and some more information around that, and in terms of how long the vacancies have been open and what the pool is and how long they've been posted, and it's kind of like a mini report on that.
Yeah, I don't know all that specifically. I'm not sure that that is, I don't know, it would be helpful, maybe it's an offline discussion, to understand how specifically that speaks to the limitation. I think, it sounds like you have some questions just about that process, and-
About insufficient maintenance, yeah.
Right, but specifically about the hiring process.
Well, I'm, my concern is around insufficient maintenance, and my other concern is about vacancy, vacancies being open for longer than normal, and I'd just like to be assured that vacancies have not been open longer than normal and that they are being filled and that we have an adequate pool and that we're moving through the hiring process and filling those.
I, I feel confident that I can assure you of those things. One of the recent challenges we've had with some of the turnover, and also, again, going back to the way that collective bargaining agreement is structured, is trying to do some restructuring. The department has taken a long time because of the structure of the layoffs, the way layoffs have to occur in that contract, and it's not a simple bumping process. It involves essentially each person being notified and having something like five weeks to respond or something. So there's, there's challenges with, that we've experienced over the last year, working through that process and getting to the point where we could post the positions. However, we haven't had the positions posted and unfilled any longer than, at least as far as I'm aware, longer than we would expect to. It's been a pretty, pretty normal turnaround time in terms of from posting to, to hiring. The challenge we faced is being able to get to the point where we believe the contract permits us to post the positions.
So I would just request some more specific data points, I guess, about all that. Happy to take it offline.
Commissioner Curry, thank you. Was there someone before, Commissioner Pillsbury?
We have discussed this at Facilities Committee Meetings several times, and if you look in the minutes, there's a number, I think 12, that are on, what's the word, their workman's compensation, and there are issues when a person goes on workman's compensation, and that the Director of Facility-
I'm having a hard time hearing you, I'm sorry.
In the Committee on Facilities, we have discussed this several months now, and there seems to be a high number, or 12 seem to be the number, that's on workman's compensation. And the issue with workman's compensation is that there are issues about how you can hire to replace those people. And he's, that has been an issue for the Director of Facilities for a while now, in getting work done and maintenance. So I think if you look in our minutes, I can't remember all the details, but we have some information there for you.
Commissioner Fisher, then, Curry?
I, two things. Number one, thank you, Commissioner Curry, for bringing this up, because I think you bring up a good point around the use of data in these reports, and, and I know it's not totally fair to put this on the directors who's standing in for Superintendent Obang, but- for Superintendent Obang, but thinking about that and looking at this, for example, the number of vacancies on the, you know, facilities team would be a metric. Or the amount of time that it takes, the average amount of time that it takes to fulfill a school dude request would be a metric that we can track over time. We could say, we are, you know, four hours better than last year. And so, I, I would like to see the superintendent's reports move towards that. And I, I don't know whether there's enough in here to hold this up, but, you know, I'd like to hear from the rest of the board. If, if that's the direction that we want to give Superintendent Obang, then we need to be clear about that, set those expectations before the next report. So, thank you for bringing that up. The, the second thing I wanted to bring up, Director Lavery, was around, I can't find it now, but there was a, a part about protecting records. And this is my area as an IT weenie. Has the district done a security audit that you know of, an IT security audit?
Not that I know of.
So, I know we finished the, the budget, and that, that ship has sailed, but I would encourage, I would say that we don't know that we are secure unless somebody does, unless we have a, a firm that does an audit. You know, just reading about these things and I, and having experience, scary experience, I would highly suggest, and I don't know the right way to, to say that, but that's, that to me is something that's really important.
Seems like a good suggestion. I'll definitely connect with the IT staff and presuming it's something that's not prohibitively expensive, I think. The sooner we can get to it, it's probably, probably the better. I did look up, to the best of my ability here on the fly, the number of vacancies right now, and I think we have currently two vacancies, although I'm also in the process, as we speak here, of logging in. I think we actually might have a hiring request pending at this time in, in property services. So, it may not be two as of a couple days from now.
Commissioner Curry.
So, thank you for the background about the facilities, looking into it. So, being on workers' comp or being vacant, I think the issue is that we are inadequately staffed, and monitoring reports are subject to the interpretation of the superintendent, and then they are evaluated by the board to be accepted or not in terms of whether the superintendent has interpreted them the way we would. I see limitation number three is not really being adequately interpreted in this area because of the 12 missing custodians. I think that's a pretty severe hardship on the district, and so, again, I don't think we're in compliance. So, I wouldn't accept this report. But secondly, I'd like to ask the facilities committee to discuss a plan for being in this situation, such as contracting with the city for labor or short-term contracting, you know, subject to the union agreement. But I just don't think that having 12 missing custodians is a very good situation for a district of this size. And I'm concerned about overtime and stress on other people who might be filling those. So, I think this requires more attention and, and action.
I can follow up to that.
And, sorry, can I just finish with the data points? That's a great idea. And under the, the policy governance model that the prior board had developed, it would have been the second step after developing policies, the next step would be to come up with evidence-based requests in a monitoring report, and, you know, that was never fleshed out. So, if the policy governance committee chair sees fit to take up that work, that would be the next step in, you know, coming up with that evidence base, like number of vacancies and these kinds of things. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Wick. I can speak to Commissioner Curry and follow up with Commissioner Pillsbury as, as co-chair of the facilities committee. So, after we learned in January that there were, actually, I think it was December, 12 vacancies, six on workman's comp, six vacancies, we suggested that we work with NIAZA multilingual liaison here at BHS to do a job fair. So, we started, conducted that business. I reached out to Superintendent Obang for support, and Kathy Mathis, Kathy Mathis shared with us the constraints of the contract, and it was such as Director Lavery explained, there were a lot of time loss situations, but that it, it needed some attention. In January, Kathy Mathis followed up with us and said they actually had a robust, 17 people had applied, and so that as of today, when I spoke to her at 4:00, she was, and she had written this week that they, they wouldn't need the support of a job fair, but things are looking better, but they still are struggling with those employees out on workman's comp. And so, in that vein, they are working with less than, I think, Commissioner, Director Lavery was right, two vacancies at this time, but the alarming situation has, has subsided to a certain degree, but that they did not need our support or NIAZA's support for a job fair.
Right. I mean, just to be clear, the problem that we have experienced hasn't been filling vacant positions. It's been positions that we have that are filled, but when we have people who are out for a variety of leave issues that we've discussed tonight. So, it's not so much the hiring process that's been the problem, it's the keeping, keeping people able to be here.
But I agree with the concerns.
But, okay. We still need a plan for that.
Yes. Yep. Commissioner Wick, last.
Yeah. I just want to make, make sure that all commissioners are aware that when we accept these reports, this is a very important part, and I hope everyone understands the, the weight of it, of the superintendent's annual evaluation. And so, I, I think we should never accept these reports lightly, because it's evaluating the superintendent is one of our most important jobs as board members. I have some real concerns as to whether we're in compliance with 2.58. And I'll describe that in a moment, but that's why I will not be voting to accept this report tonight. It says, "The superintendent shall not endanger the district's public image, its credibility, or its ability to accomplish its ends." And a couple of events have occurred over the last year or less that have really concerned me. One regarding the BHS, the handling of the BHS censorship, BHS register censorship issue. As you all know, that made national headlines. I believe that did endanger the district's public image and certainly its credibility. And we did our best, I believe, as a board to do damage control, and I think we did a good job. And I think in the end, we ended up with a, a better policy, but I'm very concerned about that. And I'm also concerned about the Agency of Education's charges, and this is all public, public trial, of the guidance director and the departure of the guidance staff. And I believe that that situation was handled in a way that has damaged our school district's credibility and our public image, and I'm very concerned about that. And for, for what, you know, so that, that's all I'll say right now. So, I will not be accepting this report as in compliance.
Thank you, Commissioner Wick. Any other discussion? Commissioner Fisher, and then Curry.
So, point of order, what is our, do we either accept or not accept?
Yes.
Yes.
We do.
We approve the motion or we, or we do not? We vote on approving the motion?
Approve on the report or not?
Mm-hmm.
Not necessarily a motion, it's, it's do we accept or not accept? And I believe that's by majority.
Yes.
Point of order. It's akin to a motion.
Yes.
The report is either one complete document or not. We can't break it up into smaller chunks. Okay.
Any further discussion? Commissioner Fisher?
So, if that's the case, I concur with Commissioner Wick on eight. I don't think we're in compliance, and therefore, I will not vote to accept this report.
So, Commissioner Fisher on Wick on number eight, and Commissioner Curry on number three. Any other discussion? Okay. So, I would ask for a vote on if the superintendent is in compliance with monitoring report 2.5, asset protection. All those in favor?
Aye.
One? All, any opposed?
Nay.
Nay? Any abstentions? Just one. So, Commissioner Barlow was in favor, Commissioner Ivanka was in abstention, and the rest were opposed, ayes. Nay, excuse me.
Just a point of clarification. So, this isn't written down anywhere, but monitoring reports are not motions. So, they're either, I mean, they're...
I, I took the word motion. I said approve.
The, okay. Gotcha.
Sorry. I took out that word.
I mean, the practice is that the board either accepts...
Accepts it.
Accepts it or not, and then asks for, you know, to have a conversation. So, it's just a different practice. It's not, it's just unfamiliar.
Point, point of order?
Commissioner Fisher?
So, what happens now?
We have a follow-up. Commissioner Curry?
So, the, so the way, if you were to watch a RETN video of other boards practicing policy governance, you would see a, a series of practices that treat the monitoring reports as a conversation with the superintendent, with the full board, and then documents, okay, like Winuski is very good at this, so if you watch one of their meetings, it documents, here's what we have problems with, and here's what we'd like you to go back and discuss or just address. And then, you know, maybe we don't agree with your interpretation for these reasons. And then the superintendent would go back and address those, and then everybody would agree on a date by which it would be brought back.
Great.
So, Michael Sharon, is that the guy? Is always willing to come and talk to this board about their practice, if that would be helpful.
So, with that being said, in the absence of Superintendent Obang, we will, I will discuss with him as chair that we would appreciate him coming back to the board and reintroducing that he is in compliance with this, or provide the data that we've requested. Similar to... Go ahead, Commissioner Wick.
Point of order on that, we may want to figure out if that's what we want to do, because at a given point in time, tonight, the report he submitted, we as a board either accept it as in compliance or not, we can certainly give him a second chance to say, well, here's why I think you're mistaken, and then we can revote, so to speak. But really, what we're supposed to do is aggregate these things over the course of a year, and they become part of the record with respect to the evaluation.
Mm-hmm.
So, we don't have to keep bringing it back until he's in compliance, because he may not be in compliance, and next time it comes around next year, maybe there's a different set of circumstances.
Great. Okay, so tonight, we did not approve, accept that he is in compliance. Okay, next. On the agenda is number nine, superintendent's report. Director Phillips, update on principal searches. Thank you for being here.
Oh, good.
Sure. So, as I mentioned before, the, the high school principal search is underway, but it has been extended, and that was the reason that there was no community, community forum this evening. So, stay tuned for more details. That will be rescheduled at, at some point. The Champlain principal position has been posted, and that posting goes through the end of February. So, during the month of March, we're working on those details right now. We'll be working on putting together the community forum and the staff forum. We did send out this week to the staff a survey at Champlain, so we could start getting their feedback, and one will be going out to parents as well. The Flynn search is underway. We actually did interviews today, and so our goal for Flynn is by Thursday to have our finalists identified. As part of that process, the staff had an opportunity to do a survey. Parents also had an opportunity to do a survey, so we've been collecting that feedback and using that as part of the process. On Monday, the finalists for the Flynn position will meet with the staff at 3:30 and will participate in a forum for parents and community members from 5:30 to 7:00. And then Superintendent Obang will be making the final hiring decisions from that point forward. Those are kind of the updates of where we are in the process. So, BHS is somewhat on hold as we wait for additional applicants. Champlain is currently posted, and Flynn is moving forward. We will be identifying those finalists for Flynn, like I mentioned, hopefully by Thursday. And in talking with Superintendent Obang, part of our process will be that we will send out to the community short bios on each of the finalists, and Superintendent Obang intends to share the full resumes of the finalists with the board.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Just had a quick question. So, I might have not heard it, but what is the updated timeline on the BHS?
Yes, so it's been reposted, and it's what we call an open posting. It says posted until filled. So, I know that they are continuing to monitor the applicants coming in, and I would expect that hopefully there'll be some sort of an update after February break, when they see what they have for new applicants and be able to give sort of an updated timeline going forward.
Good question. Thank you. Commissioner Fisher?
Two questions. Thank you, Director Phillips. For, for the Champlain principal posting, I've been getting a lot of questions from the day that I would request that principal, sorry, Superintendent Obang communicate with the, with the community, the school community, through the PTO or through other means to say exactly what you just said. That's simple. Here's what we're planning to do. I think that would alleviate a lot of the, the stress. And secondly, on the BHS principal, you said, I'm not sure, you said extend the search or expand the search?
Extend the search.
Extend the search. So, can you explain what that means and why we're doing that?
Sure. So, the initial, initial posting was put up, I don't know, several weeks ago?
November.
November? That's been quite a while. So, the initial posting, the search advisory team, and so I'm chairing the Flynn and Champlain searches. Bonnie Johnson-Aitken as lead principal is chairing the BHS search. So, essentially, Bonnie and the search advisory team came together and reviewed the applications, and in going through that process, felt that they wanted an extended search to try to get a broader pool of applicants.
And, I'm sorry, follow-up. And so, you said that we changed the requirement somehow? We opened, we opened the door wider? Is that what I heard you say?
Well, no, the posting is just, sometimes when we do a posting, we give an exact end date by which we will no longer accept applications, and it, and it closes.
Okay.
This is open until filled, so that's part of an extended search.
So, it was just the time window in which...
Time window.
We did not change the...
Nope.
Criteria.
We didn't change any of the critical criteria or expectations. It's just that it's an open window, which gives the district flexibility at any point when they feel they have the right number of applicants to continue the search, to, to move forward.
Thank you.
Commissioner Wick?
Yep. Quick question, Director Phillips, regarding the, specifically the BHS principal search. How do we know, or can you give us a little comfort, that we are posting and doing all the right things to make sure that we get the widest, most qualified pool aware of this opening, so that we can obviously get the best candidate possible for our high school?
So, I don't know all of the places that HR posts, but I will tell you that the, the primary place that we post, as do all the other school districts in Vermont and across the country, is SchoolSpring, because it is a, a national database. So, anyone, anywhere that uses the SchoolSpring service, which is a free service, will see our posting. So, it's, it's not like it's just being posted in places locally.
Thank you.
And as chair, I want to share with the board that I had been in constant communication and had implored Superintendent Obang back in November to capitalize on posting, even though it wasn't necessarily fully defined, the, specifically the BHS principal at that time, that was the only principal vacancy. We weren't sure about Flynn and the other elementary school. And so... And so they did open that posting in mid-November and left it open until January. And my question as chair, on behalf of the board, was about recruitment, and what could the board see and learn that the district did for these three positions in recruitment efforts? And so I'm waiting Superintendent, on Superintendent Obang to deliver that information to the board, simply on recruitment, and what we do, where and how we go about. So thank you for those questions, everyone. Are there further? Yep? Commissioner Walts?
In the email that we did get about the search, there is a list, SchoolSpring, Top School Jobs, N-E-M-N-E-T, Diversity Jobs Online, Indeed, Glassdoor. It's all in that email.
Yes.
But maybe we will get the confirmation of what actually that posted.
Yes. Thank you for that follow-up. Yep. Commissioner Awal?
No, I was gonna say-
Go as soon as you can.
Yeah.
That's it. I just want to make sure it's happened.
Commissioner Carey?
I have a question about the Flynn principal. So you said by Thursday of this week, finalists might be determined?
Yes.
Multiple finalists?
Multiple.
Okay. Okay, I didn't hear the yes. Thank you.
Multiple.
Anyone else? I think clarification, just for Commissioner Carey, when you asked about the principal vacancy at BHS, and they haven't posted the assistant, we have an interim position, as you explained, because the interim position for the assistant principal could potentially be the interim principal at BHS, so that they wouldn't, we are not going to post for the assistant principal vacancy at this time, because there is none. Okay. Okay, moving on to item B, Black History Month, superintendent's report.
So this is pretty straightforward. Basically, just to, a couple of things. First of all, draw your attention, we're trying to spread the word and get people to check out the district website. Our Delt group, that's led by Miriam Edasham-Kating, our EL director, she oversees Delt, the District Equity and Access Leadership Team, and so they've done some work to put together resources and a communication that is posted on our website. And going along with what you see there, as far as information and resources for Black History Month, I was asked to just share out and let everyone know that we are going to have our second annual Beyond Black History Month event. Some of you may have attended last year. It was held here and will be held here again this year on March 22nd. The format of that is a dinner event, and then an opportunity for showcasing student work and having some dialogue. So this is really just sort of an information piece, that we do have information and resources on the website for Black History Month, and also to start spreading the word about the Beyond Black History Month event in March.
Thank you. Next is the budget update. Director Leary.
The only thing I wanted to point out to people is that we currently have online a presentation that reflects the final action of the board. So you saw a number of presentations throughout the budget cycle, but we did kind of a final version of that, that reflects your ultimate decisions. That's not something that we've presented, but I just wanted you to know it's there in case people are interested in looking at that. And then we expect by the end of this week to also have posted online our comprehensive budget document. That's the, there's a big discussion about what we did, there's Q and A, there's the line item detail, and that's all expected at the end of this week. And then lastly, next week, we have, at this time, scheduled our auditors to come and talk about the FY '18 audit. That audit is also available on the budget website under the Audit Information tab now, so it's posted, and I'd encourage you to take a peek at it if you're interested before that meeting, and probably later this week, certainly by the time we meet a week from now, in any event, we'll have the management letter as well. That's it.
Thank you. Next, I have item D, policy memo. Thank you.
Do you want Nate to say something on this?
No?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. We're moving on now to the policy memo. And really Superintendent Obang just asked me to reference this, because the next items on the rest of the superintendent's report are policy-related, so just asked me to reference this memo as far as his communication to you about the work that needs to be done around policies and procedures, and what those roles look like, both for senior staff and the board. So I don't know if you want to have any discussion?
Maybe I'll clarify that.
Commissioner Wick?
Yeah, sure. As co-chair of the Policy Committee, we are grateful and we thank the superintendent for that policy memo, which in a nutshell is where he has offered to re-offer, and we accept his offer, to kind of help us manage the, what we call the mandatory, legally mandated policies, and present them to perhaps us here as a full group, and then they go briefly, I hope, into committee, and then they come back for second reading if they're not amended or changed. So it's just a matter of trying to keep pushing that stuff through, because as volunteers, it's hard to keep up with all of these mandatory policies. So we're grateful for your help with this. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Wick. All right, moving on to item E, Policy D5, revisiting, we're coming back to animal dissection from last, actually, I think it was December.
Yes. So the animal dissection policy was first shared with you in December. There are no changes on our part to that policy. It is the exact same policy that we brought forward in December. At that time, there was a request to see some of the operational procedures that are in place that go along with that policy. This requires the high school to do some communication to students and their families regarding the opportunity to opt out of participation in animal dissection, and to provide an alternative way to assess students. So the policy has come back with the sample procedures that are currently in place with this policy.
Any discussion from what you've viewed online, school board members? Commissioner Wick?
Yep. With that, briefly, unless anyone, I mean, we'll see if anyone objects, but the problem last time was this particular law required procedures be included with the policy, which is why we tabled it. So now it's back. I would, I consider this now a second reading, because the procedures are back, are with the policy, sorry. And so unless anyone does object, which I respect, but I think there's no, well, we'll see. I'd like to make a motion to adopt animal dissection as presented to us tonight. Is there any second?
Commissioner Awal?
All right. Any discussion? No. If I may, Chair, this is still your-
You're on a roll.
All right, all right, I'm on a roll. Any, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any objections? Passed unanimously.
Thank you.
We can put that one in the books.
Policy D5. Next, Policy C7, student attendance.
So C7, student attendance policy comes before you tonight. Basically, this is a policy that our registration coordinator, that's part of Victor Prusak's position, and the principals work through the actual carrying out of this policy and the procedures that it requires. Essentially, this policy says that we have a responsibility to make sure that children between the ages of six and 16 are either enrolled in one of our schools, or that we have documentation, if they're Burlington students, that they are somehow enrolled in an approved program, including homeschooling opportunities. So this is the mandatory policy. Language is right from Vermont School Boards Association Recommendation for Policy Language, and the actual follow-up procedures that go with this policy are handled, again, with the registration coordinator and building principals.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Who's our truant officer? Who is our truant officer?
Diana Kernoff.
Commissioner Carey?
Just as a follow-up, does she have an office in this building here?
Central office.
Central office? And have we, do you have attendance data for the schools? Like, what is the attendance rate? What are the absent rates? And do we-
There is a report that we could get you, so I don't have that here, but we certainly could get you attendance report data. So all of that is entered into the Power School system, so there are reports for individual students. And that's the data that Diana needs in order to track notifying parents at various intervals when their students have accumulated absences.
And there's a cumulative number of absences per school?
You can find that in the equity report card. It's not by school and the card, because, for various reasons, but it's combined in the equity report card.
Commissioner Walts?
Thank you.
It says to cut off this age 16. Can we get information about why that, is it what it is?
As seniors are 17 or 18, so senior.
Yeah, so the age 16 requirement comes right from the law from Vermont School Boards Association. I don't know why, you know, we can certainly look and get you some additional information. I, you know, that's, that's the state law, 16.
Good question. Good question. Commissioner Walts? Anyone else? So to answer, I think we could follow up, as chair, we could follow up with Superintendent Obang to answer your question. So Diana Colonel is the truancy officer. I know that there has been some questions about truancy reporting at BHS. Are you, and are you, Commissioner Carey, asking about additional information on truancy across the district?
Yeah, I'd like to know how many absences there are and what the results are. Like, is there, I don't even, I don't know if a kid is out 50 days a semester, is there a standard regarding attendance and passing, for instance? So I don't know any of that information. I'm curious about it. And also, so anyone over 16, we don't keep records on? No, that's not true.
I can find that out.
Because they sign out. They sign themselves out, don't they?
Right. So it's two separate things. It's not that we don't keep records, it's just that students between the ages of six and 16 have to be enrolled in school. So at the age of 16, you can go through a process to decide that you want to drop out of school. But if you are still in school, we are still tracking all of your information.
Okay. And can we, can we get that information by school, like BHS specifically? Attendance data for BHS?
So tell me more about exactly, what would you like to see for-
I'd like to know, I'd like to know the numbers of absences per month.
Per month?
Yep.
By grade level?
All grades, ninth, 10th, 11th, 12th.
No, but do you want it-
By grade level?
Sectioned out.
Sectioned out.
Yeah. Yeah, that would be great.
I'll interject here, as chair, we'll follow up, I'll follow up with Commissioner Carey, and we'll meet with super, or I'll take your concerns, or any commissioner's concerns with regards to this issue, and email me questions, and I'll consolidate and present to the superintendent.
Okay, that'd be great.
Thank you. So in this, Commissioner Curry?
Yeah, I mean, I guess I would just ask that data requests have a purpose, given demands on staff? I mean, is there, you know, I think it's interesting, we already get this as part of the equity report card, if you wanted to have, and the reason for that is we track it by income, language ability, IEP, race, gender, for a very specific purpose. I mean, I just would like to understand the reason for the request. Is there, is it, you know, related to some monitoring report or decision? It seems like as the curriculum committee, there might be a place, a context for it. But I would like to request that, you know, we could all load up the staff with data requests, and it's important to have a, you know, a reason to why it's a priority.
Okay, well said, and that's what we'll do. If you're interested in that, send me an email.
Sure.
Why? And what? And I'll follow up with Superintendent Obang. Thank you. So that was a first reading, Director Phillips, for Policy C7, student attendance.
Yes.
We accept that as a first reading. Moving on to item number 10, Board Policy. Item A, Commissioner Wick, first reading of the 2.1, 2.11, Stakeholder Communication.
Okay. Oh, thank you, Chair. Tonight, for first reading, you have it up there. It's been posted for several days, so I'll assume you've read it. Does anyone have any questions or any discussion on this, this evening? Commissioner Curry?
I guess I have a question about what success looks like, and how we know we've been successful at stakeholder communication.
Yep. I'd like to defer to Commissioner Fisher, who was actively involved in this one.
I believe that the burden of proof is on the superintendent, right? That's what the monitoring report would show, just like, hey, we're taking care of our facilities, report shows, this is how we're taking care of our facilities. So my understanding and interpretation of policy governance is, we don't put that forth. We say we want the, this is what he shall not do, and he gives us evidence that he did not do that.
Commissioner Curry, follow-up?
Well, I guess I would just say, as we saw with the last monitoring report, that kind of the second phase is metrics, or metrics by which we will say whether it's an acceptable report or not.
So sick of that word.
And so I'd just like to raise that as, you know, this particular goal. The, I guess my question, what would the metrics be to evaluate whether it's successful or not? Like, if he just said, I posted 500, you know, Facebook posts, and I wrote three newsletters, and I did all these quantifiable activities, would that be success? Would we know that the stakeholders feel communicated with?
So I actually do think that's the case, right? So we can measure over time, right? We can say, we've done this many Twitter posts and Facebook posts, this many emails went out to students, every single snow day was, you know, was announced by this time, and, you know, all that kind of stuff, and all that nitty-gritty, he can bring that back to us as evidence that he's using all of these.
I think just with any policy, I think over time, we'll figure out where, how it's used, where the failings are, where to make the tweaks. I think it's a great suggestion that we should be, and I actually think it's a combination of both the board, the Policy Committee, and the superintendent and his staff to think about a policy, and then what are the measurement metrics? I think that's a joint effort. I think we should do some of that.
Commissioner Wick?
Commissioner Barlow?
Yeah, did you solicit the superintendent as about the methods that he should use to effectively communicate? There's items A through G, but did you get his input on any of them?
I have a couple of things to say about that, but I'll first defer to Commissioner Fisher on that.
Uh, no.
I would suggest maybe-
Well, here's what I would suggest as well. The superintendent has a standing invitation to every Policy and Governance Committee meeting. I've asked and welcome anytime, and also every time we post these, they're publicly available to him and to every one of us, and to everyone in the entire world who has internet access. And so we bring something up, even before first reading, it's in committee. So he has many opportunities to participate in this process. We are not shutting him out in any way. If he chooses not to participate, that's up to him. So I welcome his feedback.
I'm just suggesting maybe do some outreach to him, so that he knows about-
I will do some more outreach. I've not, not done outreach. I will do more. Thank you.
Commissioner Fisher?
I, just going back to, you know, Commissioner Curry, fair, absolutely fair question about how we would measure this. And for me, I think the important thing, what generated me proposing this, was the absence of this. And so in a certain situation, I went back and I said, can we, can we tell the superintendent, you didn't do this, but you were supposed to? And I couldn't find anything in the policy. So that's why it's important to me to have this here, so that in whatever instance we choose, we say, you didn't tell the public that this was going on.
Commissioner Curry?
I mean, I'm supporting the policy, I'm just, what's ironic to me is that, I don't know if it was this year, I think it was this year or earlier, that- know if it was this year, I think it was this year or earlier, that I saw no less than, like, 10 complaints by parents about the number of times they were contacted about a snow day. It was like robocall, and it was email, and it was like five other ways, and they were like, there was like nothing else anybody could talk about that day, other than being told too many times that there was a snow day. So I'm just saying that, you know, is that compliance? I guess it is. Is that, do people feel communicated with? I guess they do, but are they happy? No.
About snow days.
I thought that happened when they changed the systems, and somebody at central office was figuring out how the system worked.
Was it this year?
Yes. Russ?
I don't know.
Yeah, or in the spring, wasn't it last spring?
It could have been. It just struck me as ironic.
So I totally get that, and doing something new the first time, especially technology, you know, you're going to make mistakes, but I think the important thing here is that the superintendent and the district are communicating to stakeholders. That's the most important thing, and we can argue about, you know, A through J or whatever, but there was nothing in the policy about communicating to stakeholders.
So any other comments that haven't already, on related topics that haven't already been asked, discussed? No?
Great.
Okay, great. Well, this is just the first reading, so everybody gets another month to please make comments, feel free to attend these meetings. The committee is here for all of us. Everybody's welcome. Thank you. So that will close the first reading piece. We'll move on to second reading. This came before us a month ago. It's been back through and in committee. We have debated it. Director Lavery also was on the telephone with us at our last meeting. He had some concerns, and I hope we've allayed his concerns, but if we haven't, that's okay too. If, so, I guess what I'd suggest is anyone who wants to speak up with either praise or concern, please do. This now's the time. Commissioner Lavery will give you the first bite at the apple if we've allayed your concerns or not.
So I think, just for clarity here on the agenda, we're, you're talking specifically about the revised policy 2.4 here.
Yeah.
It was just grouped in with a few of the other mandatory policies.
Apologies.
Just so folks know what we're talking about.
Yeah, three new sentences, sentence four, five, and six.
There we go. I'm just getting it up on the screen there. Yeah, so the concerns that I raised was really more of a process one, which was requiring this stuff to be included in the annual report would create challenges associated with the timing of producing the annual report, particularly, and this could change in the future, but at least for the past few years, probably three or four years at least, we have taken, I'll say, at least into kind of halfway through January to make a final decision on the budget, and we just run up against deadlines from our printer to get data in for the annual report. So the discussion that, or that was the concern that I aired, and I was comfortable with what I understood to be the awareness of that by the board and the fact that we will do our best to comply with this, but obviously if there, if the decisions on the budget aren't made, or if there's some other kind of reason where we run into, the timing doesn't work, this can always be, this can always be revisited. And as part of this process, we also talked about the need to determine kind of what it is in terms of the financial information, what financial information we want and consider useful. The thing we're working on now is a kind of a really detailed budget, and it was suggested that maybe going to a model that resembles something the district was doing probably five or so years ago. It's a little less detailed, but it might be sufficient. Maybe we're in different times now, so, and that might be more realistic to turn around in time for the annual report. So understanding those things, I'm willing to give it a shot.
Thank you, Nathan. Really appreciate it. We'll see how it goes, and we're not, we can't ask for something that's not, that's unreasonable, so we'll just see how it goes. Any other discussion on this one? Okay. Seeing none, I'd like to make a motion to approve the changes to Policy 2.4. Is there anyone who seconds this motion? Commissioner Pillsbury? Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Okay, the motion carries. Thank you.
All right, moving on to Item 11, Executive Session.
Hold on, we've got three other.
Oh, Conflicts of Interest, sorry, my bad.
Okay.
Conflicts of Interest, Permanent Capital Assets Travel and Reimbursement.
Okay. All right. These are those mandatory policies that Nathan and others are helping us move through, and these are second readings, so I'd like to make a motion to adopt, I'm sorry, to waive the readings and adopt these policies as presented. Second, Commissioner Pillsbury, any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to table Number 11 until the superintendent can be here to participate in light of the weather.
Oh, so Number 11, just point of order, Number 11 does not involve the superintendent. It's the executive session you're talking about?
Mm-hmm.
That's evaluation of a public officer where that does not involve the superintendent. Still, you're still welcome to make the motion.
Well, it doesn't involve the super, are we, is it about the evaluation of the superintendent?
Yes.
Okay, so I make the motion.
Oh, okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a second? So, just a point of clarification, the motion is to remove an item from the agenda.
To table an item.
What?
To table an item.
Okay, to table an item from the agenda. Okay. And parliamentarians, is this by majority vote to table, or is it supermajority?
It's hold.
What do we think? Oh, please hold.
Commissioner Fisher's.
Commissioner Fisher's going to answer that. And is there discussion?
No, there's not.
No discussion on tabling? I think we all agree.
Well, hold on a second.
All right, we'll wait.
This is, this is not tabling a motion, you are amending the agenda, correct?
Oh, that's true. We're amending the agenda, and if you do so after you've, after the beginning of the meeting, you need two-thirds. So two-thirds of 12 is eight, but 12 aren't here, so how many are here? Let's see, Commissioner Gorman, who else is not here?
Just Commissioner Gorman. Eleven are here.
So we would need, oh, come on. Who's good at math?
Seven.
What's seven divided by 12? What's the number?
I mean, you need seven, right? Do, even if you've got 11.
Yeah.
Right? Or do you only need six?
What's seven divided by 12? What's the?
You want two-thirds of 11?
Two-thirds.
Oh, you need two-thirds. Sorry.
What is two-thirds of 11?
It's zero and a half.
You're still going to need seven.
Seven point three three three.
So you round up to eight.
I say.
You need eight.
Yeah.
So let's.
Seven point three, it's rounded.
So you round up, because you need the next whole number.
You need at least seven point three three.
Yeah.
Otherwise, it's not two-thirds.
So there's no discussion, so I would call a roll call.
Are you sure of that? To amend the agenda? I haven't found that yet. There's no discussion? Are you 100% confident?
It's to table an item.
It is not to table the item.
It's to amend the agenda.
If I'm not mistaken, you table a motion. There's no motion on the table. You want to amend the agenda.
Mm-hmm. Or do you want to wait till we make the motion?
And then you could.
Right, because you want to remove this from the agenda.
I'll wait till you make the motion.
Okay.
I make a motion to consider executive session under Vermont law, because, to discuss.
Point of clarification? I checked the law, and if you could just read it, we don't have to.
Yeah, I know, I'm doing that. I'm doing that.
Oh, cool.
Yep. Motion to consider executive session under BSA 313, to discuss the following, evaluation of a public officer or employee.
I'll second that.
Now, we can have discussion.
But, yeah?
Yes. Commissioner, Commissioner Barlow?
I'd like to move to table this motion until the superintendent can be here to participate in the discussion.
Hey, I've got a comment.
Okay. Commissioner Wick?
Oh, I'm sorry. You need a second.
Second. I thought you were seconding it. Curry, Commissioner Curry, seconds.
And then discussion.
Move to one minute, yep.
Sorry.
And any discussion?
If, and parliamentarians, correct me, do we have discussion on a motion to table?
My understanding is that we don't, but.
Okay, fair enough.
I'll defer to others.
And then what's our threshold? Motion to table? We'll wait for mine.
You may not interrupt the speaker. Second needed, debatable no, amendable no, two-thirds vote.
Okay. I call roll call on that.
So a roll call to vote?
What's the, could you, Chair, restate the motion? Motion is to table the motion?
To go into executive session.
Okay.
So I'll do a roll call. Commissioner Gulick?
No.
Commissioner Kerry?
No.
Commissioner Alwell? Commissioner Pillsbury? Commissioner Waltz?
Yes, I would like to table.
Commissioner Ivankic?
No.
Commissioner Barlow?
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher?
No.
Commissioner Wick? Commissioner Curry?
Yes.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, for no, and three for yes. And.
So you need two-thirds to table.
So the motion fails. The motion does not carry.
Okay. All right, the motion does not carry. So we will make a motion.
You can also ask for discussion.
The main motion. Yes. Any discussion? Commissioner Barlow?
Yes, well, one of the reasons I moved to table is because I believe this executive session will be to discuss the process that we'll use to evaluate the superintendent. And historically, he's been a part of those initial conversations, so it would be appropriate for him to be at this initial conversation about his evaluation.
I could respond.
Sure. Commissioner Wick?
My response is, absolutely, we're going to involve him in process discussions. It is ultimately, though, the board's prerogative, as long as we're following the law and the contract, to evaluate the superintendent in the manner that the board chooses. This is the board's process, not the superintendent's process, but absolutely, if I were, I believe this board will involve the superintendent in a discussion of process, so there's no surprise about what the process is, but it is the board's process, not the superintendent's process. And I was part of the last round when we all did this, and I remember the superintendent was not in the room.
For parts, that's true.
Exactly.
But initially, when we were talking about the process that we were going to use to evaluate, and he wasn't in the room.
And we have had some preliminary discussions, and we'll do that together as a full group with the superintendent. I hope he's around next week, because you'll see, part of our process, we come back next week at the end of our audit meeting.
And I would like to follow up, as Chair, we, I was unaware that Superintendent O'Bang would not be at this meeting until last Thursday, so we had this on our calendar. I'd like to move forward with it, so I appreciate moving into executive session. May I have a motion to move into executive session?
I just moved to go ahead to executive session.
Commissioner Pillsbury, a second?
I already moved.
You did?
Yeah.
Thank you. Catching up.
Yeah.
Then.
So, and after, more discussion.
Yep. Any more discussion? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Any abstention? All right, we'll move into executive session. Thank you.